All right, y'all. I know the clock back there says 5:59, but it is technically 6 o'clock. So I'm going to call to order the meeting of April 25th, 2023 Historic Preservation Commission Meeting. But before we get down to the approval of the agenda and the roll call, I do have a quick announcement. Mrs. Susan Brown has served our commission for many years, and we're very grateful to her. We're very thankful to her. And on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission and several other city members here, standing over here, we would like to present her with this plant. And I have a card here. Ms. Susan Brown, we're very grateful to you.
She's not going anywhere. You just wasted her money.
Do you want to get a photo? We'll get one at the end.
All right. Put my glasses on so I can see. Now, we're going to do a roll call. Let's see. We've got present, we have Ms. Fay Brasi. We have myself, Elizabeth Jones, Jane Camp, and Ms. Susan Brown. Absent tonight is Laura Powell. Also present, we have Brad Callender, the city planner, and Laura Wilson, code administrator. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the, of the approval of the agenda as submitted. And I will need a motion for the approval of the agenda as submitted. Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Approval by Jane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes for March of 2023?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Do we have, okay, we have a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion so carried. Next on the agenda, it looks like we would have old business, but we don't have any old business, so we're going to move on to new business. We have a request, we have COA 120 Mirror Street. Do I have someone here to represent Mirror Street? Anyone here for 120 Mirror Street? All right, it looks like I don't have anyone here for Mirror Street.
It is customary that we just table the motions, and someone was here to talk about it.
So I need, I probably need to get a motion to table, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I, can I get a motion?
I move that we table it till next time.
Do you, do you want to move it to the end of the agenda, just in case they show up late?
Okay, yeah, let's, let's, let's do that. Let's just, let's move that to the end of the agenda, and then we'll come back to it. Let's do that, because they may come, they may come in. Let's go on to number two. We have the COA 134 North Broad Street. Okay. Can I get you to approach the, the front and speak into the microphone? Just tell us about your project. Your request. What you're asking us for?
Basically, we are trying to change the front. We're trying to put a sign and some lights up and change the windows. The windows will be, the windows that they have now, they have like the, so the windows that they have now, they got like the crosses in on the woods.
Mounds.
And these, the new ones, they don't. But all the other buildings around us, they don't have the ones. I mean, we're trying to match the other buildings around us with the same windows. And I mean, that's pretty much it. It's just a sign on the front, three lights above the sign, and then two lights on the brick beside the door. And then the four windows above the sign.
Is that a picture of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we see it, please?
You have here paint storefront. Does that mean paint the brick?
Looks like they're painting the wood and the,
Yeah, I think they're just painting the wood.
Not paint the brick, okay.
Do we have, can we do questions? Ask them questions?
Certainly.
I see in the picture you've removed the shutters.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something you plan to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm so glad, because they were out of proportion.
Can you state your name for the record?
Colby Edwards. Colby Grant Edwards.
Thank you.
It's on the back view where the building has been painted. I've been out of town, and I just breathed back in, so I didn't get a chance to go look. So has this been here before painted like that, or is that something you proposed to do? It's the picture with the awning?
The awning.
The back?
I don't think, I think we're trying to find that picture.
Do you need this back? No, the painted, is it painted like that now? This is colored picture of it.
It's, no, ma'am, it doesn't really look like that. I mean, it is black, it is painted, but we were going to repaint it and make it look.
No, it's white. It's painted white here.
Oh, the, are you talking about the brick?
The brick.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the brick.
Uh-uh, the brick.
I'm pretty sure the brick is.
And I don't want to interrupt you, but we'll need you to speak.
Into the microphone, just for quick.
Yes, ma'am. I don't think, I don't think the brick is painted, but I could check on that.
Yeah, because that's a big deal.
He said no. No to the back and no to the front, so no paint on the brick at all.
You're not going to paint the brick?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the brick is just, I mean.
Thank you. Because it wasn't listed, so I just wanted to be sure.
Susan, I don't know. What do you think? This, this new, this, this note here, new brick relocates rear entrance. I'm just curious as to how that interrelates with the old brick. Or, I mean, what do you think?
Where do you see that?
Look, look on, if you look at the plan here, at this picture, this picture right here, the note at the bottom of that plan.
Right here.
Where it says new brick relocates rear entrance. I'm just wondering how that new brick is going to relate to the old brick. How that's going to, how that masonry is going to work in. I just,
Okay.
You see my point?
Yeah. I don't know. I don't, I don't know if I.
Because I can't, I can't tell just from this picture. I don't. I'm not sure what that means. You know, that's a bit vague. Do you, do you know what that means, young man? New brick relocates rear entrance is what it says. I'm not sure what that means.
I think he's talking about the brick that is on the ground right there.
Okay.
Goes into the entrance.
Okay.
I think he just wants to make that new.
Is he going to work that into the old brick? He's going to work that into the existing brick?
Let me ask him.
Okay.
Right here.
Uh-huh. Like repointing. If there was some damage to the brick, I could see repointing, but I would be curious to know, like, who, you know, what kind of mason work would be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because sometimes it's too white.
Well.
They need to color the, color the.
I would, I would just be curious because of the, the, the age of the existing brick, and then what you're doing with new brick. You know, I'd be curious just of the water issues that might evolve from that.
This looks like it might have, if somebody has repointed it, and, I don't know what else, what else it would be. It's not complete.
That's my only concern, is just not knowing what the, what the existing brick looks like. Like, you know, how in hold it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they're going to, relocates rear entrance. I, it, it looks like.
And the mortars just, oh, I can't hear you.
Hey.
I can't hear her.
If it,
Existing bricks.
The picture with the, this picture.
At the entrance?
It, it is, there's a, a black, I don't know what that is, that goes on down over the light fixture in the plant. I don't know if they're moving that entrance down and taking out the brick, or what that means. I'm, I'm not clear.
Yeah, maybe it is. Maybe that's what they're doing.
New brick relocates rear entrance. Yeah.
What are we talking about here?
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Yeah. All right.
I don't see what you said.
I'm already up.
Of this?
All right, so he said, so the door on the back, it's, um, the old door, it used to be really big, and we changed it to the, to the double door. So like, if you look, so if you look at this, the door used to come all the way out to here. So there's no, right now, there's no brick right here. So we want to, we're basically just wanting to put brick there. So it's not on the floor or anything. That's the only brick that we're doing.
Okay, so they, the doors were removed, and now something needs to be put in to replace with space where the doors were.
So this opening is larger than the existing opening?
Yeah, so there's no brick about from this black piece down.
I see the point. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Right in here, behind that tree?
Yeah, so this little black piece that runs right there.
Uh-huh.
From the end of that, all the way down, there's like no brick right there.
Okay. Now, that makes more sense. Okay, I can see that.
Right here.
Yeah. Yeah, you see, because you see.
It was more, how it, it was more, it was a more outstretched.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Okay, I thought you were going to put it in front.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Well, and it makes a difference, too, with all this that's deconstructed looking, if it's going to make this look new. What is that horizontal line above the door?
That's where the door used to extend.
It's like a sliding door over it.
That's where it used to be a larger door, and they took the doors off.
Oh.
It's probably part of a metal frame that the door was hung on. I don't know. I would sort of like to see what, what they have in mind.
Do we meet at the site and see?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we meet at the site so we can better understand what they're going to do and what kind of brick they're going to use.
A site visit?
Yeah.
Can you, can you, can you make a motion for a site visit? And we need, we probably need to make a motion to have it done before a certain date. Would you be okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I make a motion that we have a site visit.
Let's look at the date for the next meeting. Let's see, Laura, when is the next meeting? The next meeting is May, would that be May 25th?
23.
May 20, I'm sorry, May 23. Okay, so can you make a motion for a site visit before May 23, and we would coordinate that with you. Would you be okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And if we need to go out and look at it with him, you know, we don't mind doing that.
Okay, all right.
I make a motion that we have a site visit before May 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. The motion approved. We will coordinate with you. Laura will be coordinating with you to schedule a site visit, and then we will have another hearing at the next.
All right.
HPC meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Next on the agenda, we have COA 303, request for COA 303, West Highland Avenue. Looks like a fence. Is anyone here, I see, is anyone here for that? Is that Laura?
Yes, that is Laura. And prior to the meeting, but after the agenda had posted, she had emailed requesting that, to withdraw her application. At the time that she requested a withdrawal, she was planning on being here. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it, so she asked me to announce that to you.
Okay. So do we need a motion for that, or we just go ahead and withdraw and have it for the next one?
She's requested the withdrawal.
Yeah, she has requested.
So we don't need anything for that, okay. All right, so we will hear that next go around. Next on the agenda, we have request for COA 130 South Broad Street, exterior changes and signage. Yes, sir. Can I have you approach, state your name, and then tell us why you're here?
Gilbert Lucero, I'm the business owner.
Okay.
We would just like to upgrade the front. There's no structural changes except for the front door. The selection that we made, that we submitted to you guys, replicates the same doors at State Farm, Coffee Camper. It's a three-quarter window with a single panel at the bottom. It'll be black steel, but it'll look like everything else. And then the paint color was also submitted for the exterior.
We're not going to, we're not going to look at the paint color. You can paint, we don't, we don't.
You don't like the colors now?
Well, we like, we'll look at it, but we're not going to, we're not going to make you jump through hoops on the paint color.
Okay.
The door is a good change.
I believe that's the only two things on there.
Did you want them to approve your sign, your painted sign?
Oh, yeah, square footage for the signage.
And this is going to be a, what kind of business?
It's an acai bowl and poke bowl place.
A what?
Acai bowls. It's like a smoothie in a bowl, and it's got chopped fruit all over the top of it. Little bit.
What about the signage?
I just need a square footage amount. It's just the sweet berry across the top, nothing else. It's two-tone.
Well, I see one that has kind of a bullseye. I see two choices.
Round circle with the S.
Oh, the circle one is not an option. It'll just be the, the sweet berry with.
Thank you, thank you. Leave it off the circle.
Yes, the circle is not.
Good, okay.
Forgot I gave you that picture.
Good. And does this fit the square size, the code, Brian?
Ma'am?
Signage.
Yeah, what is, I'm looking through the file. I don't see any dimensions.
The linear footage of the front of the building, I believe, is either 23 and a half or 24.
Foot and a half for that.
Yeah.
I don't do math very well.
I'm looking for the dimensions.
24, you said?
I believe so. That's, it's not bigger than that. I know that.
Should be able to do that easily, but that's 36 square feet. That's the total. 36 square feet. Not, you don't have a rough estimate of what that is. That looks like it's probably one and a half feet.
That was just thrown up there on the computer.
So that, so you're not, if it's, if it ends up being smaller per, like, as she would permit it?
Yeah, we'll make it as big as we can.
I mean, 36 square feet is kind of generous for that, that storefront. It's, it's going to be clearly bigger than butcher block as far as the dimension and with it, that's a.
We have no signage in the windows.
That's fine.
I think the second one looks better color-wise.
What, what were you, what, what do you, may I have a question? Somebody, I'm looking at the door frame, the, in the picture. It has an over, a transom.
The aluminum one you're looking at?
The one with the bullseye. I'm looking at that picture. And I'm seeing a door frame that has, I guess it's the outer section.
So.
It has the transom. What are you doing with that?
I would like to take that off and then just trim it out better.
And just have the inner door, not the outer?
Correct.
There's not a door there, is there?
No, ma'am. That aluminum frame, I believe, is original with the building, and then they.
Is there a transom on the inner door?
No, there's no change.
No.
Okay. So you would frame up that as?
It would be out of wood, and then it would be painted the same color.
Painted the color of the brick? And what about your inner door in there? That's the one that you have.
That's correct. That's the picture that.
The metal.
So you're, you're taking the metal frame and replacing that with a wooden frame with the transom?
No, the transom would be gone for good.
And that is, you said, you thought was original to the building?
I believe so. Underneath the, the wood framing of the windows, there's metal for, or aluminum framing, which looks like it sits on a brick curb storefront. And they got approved to cover it with hardy board, so that's what's already there.
I'm just kind of looking at it, that maybe, what do y'all think? That it might look better without anything? Just leave it as open and then not do wood, adding the wood to it? Have it open so you could see the light fixture in it? What if we made a visit to your place and talked to you and looked at it close up? These pictures don't do much for me.
Sure. I mean, if you didn't like it without the window, I don't have.
What do y'all think?
I'd, I'd like to know if, if the glass in the transom is old or?
It was old and cracked in a few corners.
And, and that's still what's there?
Yes.
I'd like to look at that, just since it's maybe original, maybe, maybe I can come up with some pictures of.
Of the original?
I'm just thinking historically, that has been added through the years, and it's not.
Yeah, I'd like to look for some pictures and see if, if it is original or not, or.
The transom is framed out of aluminum.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's not that old. Wouldn't be, I don't think. Unless they just took the transom window and put it back in the aluminum frame.
But you're proposing to remove that, is that correct?
Yes.
And trim it out, and that?
I can put a transom back and frame it out of wood.
Well, if, if we meet you up there, and then we can, maybe by, before we come, I can locate some pictures and see if what was there, as far back as I can find.
Do we have any questions from the public?
Do you want to approve any part of his?
Okay, yes, let's do that. Well, we just have the, we have the sign, and we have.
The sign and the, the new door.
Well, before we approve the, that sign, for me, placement of the signage is, to me, as an artist, would be very important. And we might want it centered, or you might want it off-center, depending on what you do to that door.
Well, there is, in the brick pattern, there's a frame, a picture frame.
See, that's the thing we can't see, so it's good that we're going to make a visit then. Good.
It's behind the, the round circle with the SB.
I see it.
And it's, um.
Ah, but that.
No matter what the door does, the sign will be.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying there. But that's awful, isn't that small? I mean, is it the code? I mean, code is bigger than that, I think.
For my signage?
No, for the old one.
The old one.
The old one is.
The old one's pretty big.
The old one is whoever built the building, and I can't remember now who it is, but that's their name, the original.
How can this, so I can hear you?
Said the, the original, that little rectangle with a name in it, was more than likely the builder, the owner of the building, the original owner.
Well, it ends in O-C-K, so is, would that not be butcher block?
So the, the picture that was used for my,
I guess it could.
My design is of butcher block. It is now Ned's Donuts. So that sign's gone, and there's one painted right now.
Okay. I thought it was in the, if it's in the brickwork, then it's original of the building, but I can't tell that. But if you just go with the Sweetberry name, which color the, the?
The, the letters would be white, shadowed with pink.
The first picture?
Yes, ma'am. Due to franchise regulations.
Well, butcher blocks letters were white.
The letters that were painted now are also white.
And you got a different colored brick painted on there, right?
Yeah, it's like a teal.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's a completely different color than it is right now. Does anybody else on the panel have questions? Do we have any questions from the public? Do we want to approve part of this before making a motion?
I don't see any reason not to approve the, the name, the, the name painted on over.
I think we need to go look at it before we approve any of it, because it may change our minds.
Okay. I'm open to.
We want to do it all together after we look at it?
That's fine, wasn't it?
I would.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we do an onsite meeting to decide on the, the signage and the transom frame. I don't know how to word it.
We approve paint, maybe? Because that's not going to change.
We're, we're, we're not going to have a say in the paint, so you can paint it.
Oh, perfect.
As you choose.
Okay.
We appreciate what you're trying to do.
I'm sorry, Susan, I didn't mean to.
Got to keep moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the door will make a huge difference. This, this door on it is not at all appropriate.
Susan, I apologize. Can I get you to? Susan, I apologize, can I get you to restate that motion for the record?
I said, I, I like the change in the door because what's there in the picture is very inappropriate for, for that.
Can I get you to restate that motion for the record? I, I apologize.
I remember it.
Maybe Laura got it.
Did you get it, Laura?
I move that we have an onsite meeting to approve the signage. And the, um, the framing for the, with the transom, whether to remove or redo that.
Is that sufficient, Laura?
Do you want, are you going to approve the door today, or are you going to push that off?
I want to do it all at once.
All at once, okay.
And, and then I'll add to change the door to what was presented tonight.
I got it.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second in buffet, okay. All right, all in favor? All right. Motion carried unanimously, thank you very much. And we will reconvene on May twenty-third after we, after we go and visit, and Laura will be in touch with you to schedule a visit, is that good with you?
Perfect.
Okay, welcome, come and see that. Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate you. All right, next on the agenda, we have, um, request for COA one-twenty-three. It looks like, um, West Fifth Street. It looks like there's a shed. If I can get you to approach, state your name, and then just tell us a bit about the project.
Uh, my name's Seth Wilkerson. Uh, we're just wanting to put a eight-by-eight shed on an existing twelve-by-ten concrete slab in the backyard. Um, it is a fenced-in backyard, it's in the back left corner. Um, there was already a shed there prior to us buying the house, but, um, it was thrown away just because it was old, it was an old metal shed. Um, we're wanting to go with a Home Depot tough shed.
Looks like you're putting it on an existing slab that's there, okay.
And then we have, I mean, a six-foot privacy fence all the way around the yard already. I mean, I imagine the shed wouldn't be a foot or two over the fence anyways.
Do we have, know what the house looks like? Do you have a picture of your house? We like for the sheds to kind of go with that.
I think, I mean, the house is white with a gray brick all the way around the bottom of it.
I'm more concerned about the roof line. We like them to go together. Ah, yeah, gable. The gable. And you chose a gable for your shed, weren't you lucky and smart?
Have you been here before? Yeah, okay, we asked somebody else to do a gable.
Yep. And you've got a gabled shed. Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we don't worry about the colors, so.
We just like them to go together, and since you chose a, had a gable roof and you chose a gable, then it makes it not look like an eyesore, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
All right, do we have any, any questions here on the panel? No, do we have any questions from the public? Can I get a motion?
I move we accept the shed as presented.
Can I get a second? Okay, all in favor? All right, motion approved, thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate your time.
Um, I guess I can just email you in order to send to them? Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have requests for COA two-twenty-one Boulevard, we have a garage addition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chad Draper, I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Jeff and Cece South. Um, I'll be the contractor for them. We're essentially taking an existing two-car garage and adding a third bay to the left side of it. And, um, the intention is to remove the existing siding, which is a twelve-inch roughly lap siding, and make the siding and the cornerboard and all the trim details to match the existing home, which is a beautiful craftsman house. The goal is to make the siding profiles and everything match the house as close as possible, um, while doing in that addition that's shown there on the drawing. I'm assuming you guys have a copy of the drawing, okay.
Where is this going to sit, and looking at your house? Back on the, or attached to the house, or?
It, it, it's an existing two-car garage, so it's already there.
Oh, I got.
To the rear of the home and on the left side.
Okay, on the left side, okay.
Near the rear, or right at the rear of the lot, I think.
Oh, I think that's going to look a lot better.
Yeah. Are we okay, Brad, code-wise, as far as the depth, uh, distance from the neighbor and all that?
Uh, no, that shouldn't be a problem, I don't see a site plan here, but just looking at the arrow photograph, if it's the garage in the very, very back, it faces the neighbor, is that, is that, am I right? It faces to the north, the opening?
The new addition, are you asking, or?
Garage door that are there now.
If you're looking at the, the garage head-on from Boulevard, the garage doors face Boulevard? I guess they're parallel to Boulevard? So the, the new door would be to the left? Does that answer your question?
I mean, I don't, I don't have a site plan, so I'm not sure what I'm looking at here, and I'm trying to use my phone to look at the location. But it's behind the house, now, there it is, okay. Yeah, yeah, no, it faces the house, the garage doors face the house. That's what I thought, just, it's hard to tell by this little photograph. No, yeah, this, this one, there's not an issue here. This will comply with all of our garage requirements.
What, what is that side setback, is it five, is it five feet?
It's five feet, yeah, for an accessory, this, this, they're well in, they're well in excess of meeting the requirements for the setback and the garage location, so this, and this addition would be allowed anyway if it were existing.
Anybody have any questions?
Sorry, I'm trying to street view it and.
Anybody in the public have any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move we accept it as presented.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved. Thank you so much for coming in, we appreciate you. Motion approved. All right, next on the agenda, we have request for COA three-fourteen South Wayne Street. We have an addition. Can I get you to state your name and tell us about the project?
Shannon Sturgill. Uh, three-fourteen South Wayne Street, um, sits behind C V S, used to belong to the Baptist Church. And when we bought it, it was, uh, had been, they used it for a warehouse, um, and it had the power and water cut off to it for about ten years. The back of the house had an older addition that had a shed-type roof, and it was in total disrepair from rainwater dumping straight into the house. So we had to take the back of the house off, replace that, and instead of going back with a shed-type roof, we just brought the original gable-type roof straight out. But in doing that, to have it match up to the original frame of the house, we had to widen it by one and a half feet. Um, and then five feet from the house, so it added about seven and a half square feet to the house. If you're looking at it from the back on the right corner.
Okay.
And then there was a deck back there that was ten by sixteen, it was in total disrepair, you couldn't even stand on it. So we took that off, and we'd like to put that back, same dimensions, ten by sixteen.
Okay.
And you took a chimney down too, right?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that chimney was about to fall, and we actually took two chimneys down because they were dangerous. They were.
Yeah, we know about those.
They were falling, yeah.
And you took down the sliding glass doors?
Uh, it, those were actually a bay window, it wasn't a door. It just had a big three-pane, old-type bay window.
Well, first off, I'll just commend you on saving the house, I mean, that's wonderful.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I mean, that's, that's just a beautiful thing. I think the main thing that every, that was, came to a concern were that, weren't there the, I want to say it was on a, Susan, do you remember, I want to say it was on the porch? Uh, was it ballisters?
Yeah.
That, that didn't quite match up with the ones that were approved to begin with?
Uh, we never had any of them.
We didn't have approval, they didn't have approval, they just did it.
I believe there were some ballisters that, that didn't quite match up with the original ones.
Those were as close as we could find to the original. The original ones, I mean, that, that house, if you look at the original real estate pictures, it had holly bushes that were grown almost over those ballisters to the house. We pulled those bushes off, those ballisters and railings, you couldn't even touch them, they were just, if you touched them with your foot, they just fell off. So we put it back as reasonably, and with the same amount. You know, those were, the ones that were on there were a little bit shorter, but we put back the exact same amount and the same tread size on the top and bottom.
What can we do moving forward to find some ballisters that are going to match up to the ones that were there before?
Well, you can have them hand-turn and spend a lot of money. You know, like we did on Boulevard, but, uh, you know, tho, those were the closest we could find available, pre-made. I thought they messed up pretty good, but I couldn't find the original pictures of the front of the house before all the bushes were, were gone. I wouldn't imagine anybody's seen those bousers in ten or fifteen years. But they were in totally, I mean, they were.
Oh, I can, I can just imagine, I mean, yeah.
You know, you couldn't put any weight on them or anything.
I want to say they were just a lot thicker, a lot heavier, if we.
They were short and fat.
Yeah, and if we could.
They were shorter, yes, ma'am.
If we can show you the pictures for those and produce those, it, it can, can, you know, if we could produce those, do you think that we, that, you know, you could find something like that and have those put on there? I think that's been a main concern, is just having the house look back like it, like it used to look with those, with those ballisters.
Do you have pictures of those? Uh, you have the exact dimensions of those?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, because when I was in here the first time, we, I wasn't here for that, but I was here for another thing, and one of you told me just to put them back, and I didn't, you know.
Well, we wanted you to put the original ones back, yeah.
Okay, I just, um.
The thing about what you've got is that, because they're tall, it, it accentuates the fact that they're too small, too thin. Do you see what I'm saying? Because they're tall, it makes them look even thinner than they are. Now, I know that you, we've got to be to code.
Well, that's what we were concerned about too, because they were so short, and we've got a two-and-a-half-foot drop-off on the right end.
Right, we realize that.
My contractor actually said there's no way we can go back with those, because they wouldn't be to code, because this property can be residential or commercial, and I know in a commercial world, they'll never work if we put back the same thing.
We're willing to work with you on that, because some of the historic places now would add a second rail at the bottom to raise the baluster up, so that it's correct and in proportion, but they'd just have a second horizontal member down at the bottom. And that, where people don't notice that so much, but the verticality and the proportions definitely is something that's different looking to the house, and it changes the look of it, that's what we're concerned about, right?
I get, I had requested a site visit, uh, and I paid the extra money for the site visit. If we could have had a site visit, I could have, probably had this done before now, it's kind of a, you know, I, I, I wish we could have done the site visit as requested.
Right.
Maybe I could have already addressed this.
And we wish.
Because I've actually got the property under contract, and this is going to.
And we wish we could have twisted your arm so you'd put the door back where it go, originally.
Well, what's going to, what's going to, what's going to, what's going to make this easy for everybody? Um, you know, what's going to make it easier? Can we get you the photos without help, you know, can we, you know, what's going to make it the easiest?
Sure, I mean, if you, I'm, I'm, I'm going to need dimensions, I'm on, I can't just go off photos, a wood turner's going to have to have exact dimensions.
Photos and, and, and dimensions and?
The dimensions would have to be estimated, but, but I mean, I.
What, that's, I mean, that's.
Do we need to go out there? I mean, Brad, what do you think, should we go out there and maybe even, I mean, and, and, and?
I mean, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the railings now versus what there, what was then, I mean, obviously, to Susan's point, I mean, an estimation would have to be acceptable by you guys as far as being close.
Yeah.
But the ones that are there now, I mean, I, it's your, it's you guys' decision about this, about that, but I, they don't, they don't look quite like the ones that were there previously. And I'm looking at an unpainted picture here, so there may be some, there may be, contrast may be an issue here with this photograph, so.
See, that's why we like for people to come before us before they do work. We like to save you money and work with you if we can.
No, I understand, it's just when, when me and you spoke over here, you said just make sure you put them back. And when I looked on your website, it says if you're repairing, uh, maintenance items, that you don't have to come forward, so I assumed that the railings were just falling off and we put them back, that would be considered the, the same thing.
And that's understandable, I think, that, you know, maybe, maybe we as an H P C in the city need to educate people better, and I, and I, I understand your point, but I think, I do think that, you know, and we'll work with you on this, you know, we'll give you the photos and we'll, we'll work together, but we, we've just, this is such a historic house, we, we really want to work to make it like it used to be.
Did the, uh, house, if he gets the shorter ones with the dimensions, and he has to put a second rail, did the original house have a second rail?
Well, no, it didn't, but to be up to code, it's got to be a certain height. And what the historic people are doing now is adding that second one to the bottom, so it doesn't change the overall look and proportion.
Right, so we can make an allowance for that. That's just what we'll do, we'll make an allowance and we can add a second rail, just so it can be up to code.
I just got back from Williams' vertical.
Do you know the code?
A lot of them.
We have a code administrator here.
I don't know what the dimensions of a rail is to.
I mean, we can, I can, I can, we can look up the dimensions of the rail and we can send it to you if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what I got to do to sell the house, I got to do whatever you, whatever you say.
Well, we can, we can, we can look them up and send them to you, and we can send you the pictures, and we can send everything to you.
Okay, when, when can we do that?
Have the, the pictures and the, and the rail dimensions and everything sent in a time, in a time span? What do we say, before the next H P C meeting? You think that's an allowable time span, Laura?
Just a little confused why we didn't have a site, site meeting before. I paid the extra money, I didn't.
I'm sorry, when you say site meeting, what are you referring to?
I requested a site meeting with them through Laura, and I paid the hundred dollars.
You paid us first.
For the site meeting.
Did, did you replace the spindles before you had a permit, or after you had a permit?
After I had a permit. Not a COA, but well after a permit. I've had a permit for the entire job for almost a year.
But you didn't have a permit to replace these, this railing?
I was told to replace the railings, and they were falling off, I didn't, I didn't have a special permit, no, ma'am, no, sir. It was originally just going to be a remodel, but once we got in there, of course, it was a lot worse than, than we thought.
Sure.
And just for clarity, there is no fee for a site visit? The hundred-dollar fee is just the application fee that everybody pays.
Okay, please.
I just, I guess, I wasn't, I'm not running the building side of the code department.
I understand.
I don't know the exact, uh, steps that were taken for the building permit itself, and if the building permit didn't cover the replacement of the railings, which, I don't know, I, can, do you know off the top of your head if it did?
So the, the building permit covered deck work in general, it doesn't get that specific?
Right, so it would have covered the.
It would have covered.
There, there would have been an impression that railings would have been included in that.
Correct.
But I think the minute you start stripping stuff off of a historic home, obviously, that's one, that's, that's the COA trigger, right? We've given you a permit to do the work, but it requires their approval at the same time.
Yeah, I was just on the impression if it was the same, you know, like material, then it was.
Right.
If I need, if I need the exact requirement, you know, dimensions, then I'll, I'll need that from y'all.
I mean, I, the best I have, you said you had pictures, Ms. Brown, is that correct?
Yeah, I think I gave you a copy, it, it's, um, the, it's more the, the, the entry, you know, the, the steps that go up. And I know the bushes were an issue, but it's the same banisters that were all around the, the porch. I mean, I can come up with another.
We left all the original, I don't know what, columns, I guess you call it, we only replaced what was in between.
Have you thought about putting the door back where the steps go up there on that corner?
Where it was when?
Well, it, more than likely, the door was originally at the top of those steps.
Right, it wasn't that, that way when I bought, it was probably changed in the fifties or sixties.
Been done a long time ago, but originally.
I never would have, I never would have, I never would have thought to do that.
Yeah, it's, that's why. Yeah, it's, that's why the steps are there on the, the corner. It went to the...
Right, but I'm, I mean, I didn't, once, once I bought a home, I didn't know that I had to, y'all...
Oh, no, I, I mean, you don't have to. I just thought it would be nice if the door was...
As much money as this house is taking, I, I don't, I don't have that left in the budget. I'm sorry.
And I, and I'd be quite honest with you, I mean, artistically and I guess architecturally, that would have been a nice feature with this home. But there may be some building code issues with the, the opening of that door. If you place it in that location now, there's a potential that that could not be a code compliant move.
Well, you got other porches that, that, the, the length of them and if the steps go up, you know, on a rectangular shaped porch and the door is right, that...
I understand. I'm just saying that if you move that, if you require that door to be moved, they may run into, we may, they might actually create more problems than it will solve problems. It will only, it will only satisfy an aesthetic appeal.
Well, you can't move the door, cause where the door is now, it walks into a twelve foot grand hallway right down the middle of the house.
Okay.
That door just goes into the den. So it may have been there at one time, but the front door where it's at is proper to the house, cause it has a grand hallway that's wide.
And the main thing to me is that's the original door and you've kept that, so that's...
Yes, we're keeping the door, yes ma'am.
Wonderful.
Yes, we weren't able to save the one on the left side, but that one in the front will stay.
It's a beautiful door.
Thank you.
Do we, are we gonna meet? Are we doing a site meeting? I don't know what...
Would you like a site visit?
I just need to know what I need to do to get a CO. I mean, you know, I'm at, I'm at your mercy.
Yeah, well, one thing that I wanted to ask a question about is what you were planning on doing with the back. You wanted to do a deck.
Just the same deck, same...
But, but it again would have a balustrade.
Well, it only had, I mean, when I bought it, it just had cedar post. This was added on to and probably the...
Right, but we wanted to look like it was, you know, don't you think?
Did you not, did you not have any pictures of the old house, original?
Not without the, the bushes were, took over the whole, you couldn't even see the house when we purchased it. But no, I don't have any of the...
I don't know if we've...
But she does. She has the picture.
The back. I don't, I don't know.
Don't you have a picture of the way it looked before?
No, I don't know, I don't know that I've seen one of the back.
I thought you brought in one.
That was the front.
Not the back, but the front, right.
Oh, the front, no ma'am. I have, I have one of the back.
The, it should be in your packet.
The what? What is that?
It's in your packet.
Yeah, that's it.
It's the first photograph in this application that shows the existing back. Oh, well, the back as it was before it was remodeled.
Yeah, I saw the, I have a picture of the back, not the front.
But the back that he demolished, all that had been added on.
Correct, yeah, that was all an add-on. None of the original house was altered.
I walked that back. It needed to be taken.
It was awful.
It was awful.
Yeah, I mean, it had rain just pouring in the, and that roof was flat, um, back.
I went through the house with the...
Yeah, yes ma'am.
Pretty bad. I just thank y'all for saving it. I really do because shame on the Baptist church.
We enjoyed doing...
Didn't it fall in?
Yeah, I didn't understand why they couldn't have sent somebody over at least stop the water years ago.
They just said it... They wanted a parking lot.
That's what I heard.
They wanted it to fall in so we could get a parking lot.
That's what I've heard.
They had the parking lot plans drawn up, I think it was twenty-eight spaces.
Oh, wow.
Well, if you would like, we could make a site visit over, just to, just a quick site visit at your convenience to go over, you know, just to, just to look at the, look at the balustrade and, and just to speak with you, but, you know, if that would, if that would be helpful.
Sure, I mean, I'll have to tear out what's there, but you'll, you know, I'll just need exact dimensions for, I mean, I just need a plan, you know.
You said you had as many balustrades as were there before?
I call them columns.
Okay, columns.
They're all still there. We didn't, we didn't take any of those down.
I know, but the spindle things, the balustrade, spindles.
I don't have, we replaced all of them.
I know, you said you had as many as...
Yes.
But they, but they were so fat, how could you have so many, the same amount with them being so skinny right?
That's what I was told by my contractor. I don't actually do the work. I have a contractor that does it, but...
That's understandable.
You know, and, and, you know, he, I know he, he went to many places to try to find what we found, uh, cause he's been through this before, you know, trying to find stuff. And, and he told me it was the closest thing he could find. So that's, that's what I went off of.
Laura, what if we have a site visit and then after the site visit, we can give our recommendations and move forward on that?
Yeah, cause he said he's already got it under contract, let's...
Well, I think we need a picture drawing of the back, what he wants to do at the back, cause we don't have anything.
Well, I'm just gonna put it back exactly like it was, but, uh, you know, what you're looking at, what it was, was just completely dilapidated. But there's a, there's a picture that includes the back porch, same dimensions, same height as we would be putting it back. It was just regular type deck boards. I don't know about these, about the railings. These may be similar to what you're looking for. I don't know.
Is that what this thing that's fallen in, is that what you're talking about? Cause I don't see a deck here.
That was after demolition. This is prior to.
Oh, okay. So it did have a balustrade on it then?
Um, yes ma'am. I don't, I don't know, I, I don't think those would have been like the ones in the front, because this would have been added probably thirty years after.
Yeah, they, maybe it should have been like them.
Okay.
So, I think moving forward, do we just need to make a motion for a site visit then, Laura? For this one?
Yeah, if that's what you, you want to do. And then you can talk about the front porch and the back porch.
And make a recommendation following that, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I'd recommend at the site visit, y'all bring those photographs so they can at least have a conversation about that and can, maybe compare what's there versus what you have photographs of to see how close
Okay.
they are to what's been improved on the property and the safety of those railings and, and whatnot. Cause well, I think what, to his point, what he was saying was that, you know, the length of the, the spindle to meet the dimension, there may not be terribly that much dimension.
Right.
Visually, there may be a change, but...
Right. Okay. So can I, can I have a motion? Well, first of all, are there any questions from the audience? Now, can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we have a site visit with him as soon as possible, um, with pictures to show him, uh, so he'll have something to go by.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Okay.
All right. So what we'll do is Laura will set up, set it up with you at your convenience and we will have a site visit with you and bring pictures and we'll bring a tape measure out there. And then following that, we will just give you some recommendations on, on what needs to, what needs to be going forward.
Would that be tabled? I mean, is there no way to move forward before next meeting?
Um...
We, we, we have the property under contract. That's the only reason I'm asking.
I think, I think we can, I think we can do, we'll do it within the next, like ASAP. We can do it before the next meeting and we could... Laura, could we, could we move this forward within the next month, do a site visit and then, and then have a, have a vote to approve something before, like within the next month, following our next, the, the site visit so that he can move forward on his contract? So that he can move forward on his contract right after the site visit. Could we go ahead and, and, and...
I think he would like to go ahead right after the site visit rather than wait until, if I'm reading...
That, that, yeah, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm gonna have to...
So that he doesn't have to wait until May twenty-third. Could we go ahead and, and...
Make a, make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation and vote on an approval and move forward and send that to you. Can we go ahead and do that following our meeting?
Following the site visit?
Yes.
I'm, I'm totally, I'm okay with that. Uh, anything they can do to help expedite it. And it's not our, you know, our place to help dictate what his contract or obligations are. I don't know. I have spoken to your potential buyer.
Yes, sir.
What does your timeframe look like? I mean...
Well, we were supposed to close May twelfth, but in the contract, you know, I told her that we, I would have had to come to the meeting and, and she just wanted that cleared up before closing date. But obviously, that's, it's May twelfth.
I guess there, well, you could have closed. Uh, you know, you could have sold the property to her, but you probably obviously didn't want to because there would have been this...
Yeah, I mean, she, you know, she's gonna want a CO before.
I was gonna say, cause that, we're not quite there on the CO yet though, are we? Is the interior finished for her? See if she wants...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the, um, uh, the only thing that's left is the, uh, some plumbing going in this week. And a, a flooring that she wanted in coming Monday and then the house will be complete on the inside.
If you can satisfy this committee's concerns or whatnot, then, yeah, I would recommend email.
And maybe your contractor could be with us.
Oh, he will be.
We'll work together. We'll work it out.
Yeah, no, he'll be there. And we, I mean, we can expedite if the material's available.
Right.
We'll work to get it done quickly.
I need to know exactly what we need.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
I would add too, and when I said I appreciated the front door being saved, were there ext, interior doors, were they still in that house?
There was only a couple six panel doors. Everything on the right side that they used for Sunday school were pretty much gone. And the left side had been gone for a long time.
Yeah, the church took interior doors there to redo the Lanya's house that's on the corner of Church Street and Broad Street, the big two-story house. They redid it and took the doors out of this house and put them, you just, it's, it's hard to sell property to a church and keep...
It is.
The historical aspect intact, even when it's the church you go to.
Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all. All right, next on the agenda, we have the request for COA 506 South Broad Street, a parking lot renovation. Just have you state your name and tell us about the project.
Wes Peters, uh, and I'm representing eighty-one investment company that owns the property.
Thank you, Wes. Thank you.
And so what we're doing, uh, just to make you guys all familiar, this is five oh six South Broad, uh, the old Avondale Felker offices. And most recently was Avondale Mortgage and, or FBC Mortgage. But our intent here basically is just to update the flow of the parking lot. Um, I'm not sure if any of you have been in and tried to park or, you know, get in and out of that parking lot, but it's, it's just not very, it does not flow very well as far as the, uh, current, uh, layout. So basically, as you can see, um, as I presented, you know, the current as it is, um, I'll just pull up that, but you, you guys have every, have everything in front of you. But as you can see, the current layout has all the parking pretty much on the outside when you pull into the drive. And so we're, uh, reconfiguring that so all the parking is on the inside. And up in front of the front door or main entrance of the building, uh, we're gonna cut that out and make that sort of a roundabout or where you can drive in and do a turnaround and drop someone off at the front door if you need to and park. Uh, just, just a much better flow, because if you go in, go up and try to park at those, uh, the spots up past the front door currently, just to be able to maneuver in and out is just, it's, it's just kind of a hassle. You gotta be, you know, uh, in and out, front, reverse, uh, to get out of there. So, um, at the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, for the most part, that's all we're doing.
I really like the handicap accessibility, the handicap ramp and the additional spaces. That, that's nice.
So, um, this is not a mortgage company anymore?
No, ma'am. It's vacant currently.
It's...
What?
It's vacant.
Oh, it's vacant.
No, they're moving to two ten.
Got your message.
No, they're moving to two ten South Broad.
And this is to code, Mr. Code Officer, the parking?
Yeah, the, what, the changes are not an issue. Uh, they would meet the requirements and they have to go through another COA approval that's checking a box for the corridor design. So no, everything here is totally appropriate.
Looks like it's just being cleaned up a little bit.
Yeah, like I said, basically, it's just to create a better flow for the parking lot itself. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah. It is. I, I concur.
But Brad, he's met the handicap requirements for parking and ramps and whatnot?
I haven't analyzed the request in that regard and that's not part of this...
I like the additions. I think that's...
I think, I think whatever they're...
It looks nice.
I think so too.
I would think that they would be required to do that. If we're gonna issue a permit, they're gonna have to, so...
Right.
I, I love it.
Yeah, I was about to say, Pat, Pat will ensure that we've got all the code met for his parking requirements and handicap.
I think it's beautiful.
I think so too.
Thank you.
You did a good job. Very, very nice. Presentation's nice too. Um, yeah, do we have any questions?
I have one. So there's, it says signage on there. That's existing, right? That's an existing, isn't it a brick monument sign? That's already...
Uh, there's one out front. Yes, sir.
So that's already there. So if it, it can be refaced and there, there's nothing proposed in here about that.
No. No, we don't have anything on signage. Just the parking lot.
Y'all are adding those pavers, right?
That's correct, yes.
Those look good.
Yeah, we'll have to cut that out because currently, um...
I think those are great.
It's kind of curved, as you can see, or, you know, on your drawing, uh, it's, it's kind of stepped up there. So we'll cut that out and then put the pavers in, the brick pavers in.
They're pretty, kind of old school look, yeah, it's good.
It blends in well too with the building.
Very pretty.
It's pretty.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept this plan as presented.
As, as providing the handicap is right, that's the only thing that I'm concerned about, uh...
Sure. We'll make, yeah, we'll make sure that's the case.
And I have buildings and I know there's a code that you have to go by. So we want to make sure that that is, is proper.
We'll be sure to do that, for sure.
Okay.
All in favor? All right. Motion approved? I thought you made a motion.
I did, but we didn't get a second.
You seconded it, didn't you?
You did, okay, okay.
And all in favor? Okay, motion approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
How are your plans on Broad Street, uptown for...
It's going good. We're just in the process of working with architects and engineers currently, um, on designing all of the construction plans. So, uh, pressing forward, we had, uh, Geotech, uh, come out and do some boring as far as for the foundation and everything a couple of weeks ago. So, pressing forward is just, it's just a process.
I can't, every time I come up to the intersection, I, I look, see if you've started work yet.
I know, we're getting there. We're excited about it. It's just, it just takes time.
Uh, yeah. It didn't look good, I'm sure.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Here, Wes.
Uh... Can, can I bring this up?
Before you do, we need to get back to one twenty Mirror Street.
Okay.
Yes, okay. So, thank you, Laura. All right, so let me go back to one twenty Mirror Street.
To which one?
This was the first one we had.
Oh, the first one.
Uh, we had, um, going back to one twenty Mirror Street, uh, we had a request for COA one twenty Mirror Street, uh, we had a shed. And we, do we have anyone here for that one?
No.
It looks like we do not. So...
We have moved it, we tabled it.
All right. Jane, we have a motion from Jane to table it. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Susan. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously voted to table. So we will be tabling one twenty Mirror Street until May twenty-third. I believe that's the next HPC meeting. All right, so that one is tabled. Next on the agenda, we have an adjournment.
Okay, and then I can say something?
Yes, ma'am. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion from Susan to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second from Jane. All in favor? Unanimously moved and this concludes the HPC meeting of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. We...